There it is. Now it's recording. And I'm going to open up first of all, the agenda and here I'm going to go to sharing screen. Let me do that. Um, let's see where's sharing thing. Looking, why am I having trouble with sharing? There it is. Okay, let me just go to, why is it not? There we are. I got pick out the document I'm about to share. There it is. Okay, so you should be able to see an agenda up there now.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Okay, so we have it here and so I'm calling it daughter. Okay, there it's called order. Okay, and then um, let's see, there's no additional appointees. And next thing I doubt, I do not see a representative of Spy V's office. Maybe it's because this was a not one of the regular meetings that it fell off their radar or something. I don't know what the reasoning will be, but um, I don't see any guest elected officials. Um, if anyone here is an elected official and I didn't know it, please alert me to that. And so it kind of moves us down to number two, adoption of the agenda. Now, while we do not have a quorum, um, it doesn't mean that I can't at least follow the procedure as best as is possible under the circumstances. So is there anyone who um, anyone here who has anything that they need to be changed about the remainder of the agenda?
No.
Okay, well, I'll move. If not, I'm just going to go ahead. Um, well, actually, I should have a vote. Um, but of course, it's just going to be myself and Sandra Turner Handy and Karen Knox. There's three of us. Well, there's three. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm motion to approve it.
Okay, is that, I'm sorry, was that Karen or Sandra?
Karen.
Okay, Karen moved to approve it. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, so Sandra seconds it. And so I'm all in favor of approving the agenda. Say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Okay, so there we go. And there's three of us. So we got second, a first, a second, and then if I say to vote, then I guess we don't really have a dispute. Um, okay, and then we have.
Uh, what would constitute a quorum? Do we need four of them?
Four.
We need four of us? Okay.
And in fact, there's a lot of discussion just background on the whole quorum issue. Um, before you were appointed and initially we had three elected people. Um, and they actually still kind of try to um, make this somehow a point on the whole youth representative thing, and it really shouldn't be a point. Um, that we had only three people. Now, when upon looking closer at the charter where it talks about quorum and then at the city ordinance, the charter, the only mention of a quorum is mentioning majority of members in a body, but it wasn't specific enough that it would be clear that it would apply to the CAC. The way it was worded when I read it at the time, where I remember it, but the municipal code says four members, but it only says that after it describes the process of appointing people. And the whole thing about submitting a list for youth member and for senior issues representative, that all was before the mention of the quorum. And it specifically said the elected members. And so the elected members are whoever got elected, whether it be one, two, three, four, or five people. And the elected members did submit the list and so, but they want to hang that over our heads as if somehow the lack of four people made a difference there. And it really did for anything else, it would make a difference, but not for that. Because it was outlined in the charter. It just said elected members. It didn't say the community advisory council shall. It said the elected members shall. But anyway, I digress. Um, so that moves us down to the next item on the agenda was item three, which would be approval of prior meeting minutes. Now, I'm just gonna go through this. We're gonna go through it again at the regular meeting anyway, because this is really a special meeting. But I'm just gonna kind of buzz through it. And if anyone mentions remembers anything I should put in there while going through it, then I can do that. To do that, I'm going to change my screen sharing. Um, I'm gonna stop the share and then reshare to get to that. Let me see. Um, trying to find the correct document for this part. I think it's over here. Okay, so this is what I have for the minutes that Mr. Creswell sent me before. You know, he also told me he couldn't make it because of family health issues. Um, but I want to go through the, I have on record here. So the meeting was called at seven twelve um, PM on seven twelve of all dates. And I'm present where myself Gregory Creswell, Sandra Turner Handy, Karen Knox, Bradley Merrill. And and somewhere in his notes, he put CAC District Seven. I'm not quite sure what that is. Maybe Regina Ross or someone else from District Seven was on and just use that as a name. I'm not sure. Um, Zelda Anderson, AJ, and Jordan. And now Donna, you were here?
Yes, I did. I um, I zoomed in. I wasn't there physically.
I'm gonna include you. I'm gonna put you on there. Um, Donna M. Okay, so I've done it M as being in attendance. And then um, at that meeting, we did the approval of minutes. And it says here it was moved by Sandra Turner Handy and seconded by Gregory Creswell. And then the next item, number two, was that we had a motion to amend the agenda to include the removal of planned presentation by Coalition of Property Tech Coalition. It was the only group that had asked to have time doing a presentation. And then the next thing was we had a motion to approve the amendment. Um, and oh, that was the same thing. So after that, after that amendment was approved, then we went back to vote on the agenda. And at that point, Sandra Turner Handy made motion, didn't get it. And Gregory Creswell seconded it, and it was approved. And then there was a motion to adopt minutes um, from the May twenty twenty one meeting by Sandra Turner Handy. It was seconded by Karen Knox and the motion passed. A motion to adopt the minutes from June twenty twenty one meeting Gregory Creswell seconded by Sandra Turner Handy and motion passed. I believe the reason, and if I remember right, the reason I set it up that way and having two different months discussed at the same meeting is I think there was a lack of a quorum at the June meeting. And so that's why since we had one on the July meeting, um, we made it retro, you know, we went all the way back to cover our bases. Um, so I think that's what happened there. And then we have the comments and there's a brief summary of comments. Again, minutes don't need to be transcripts, so it's just kind of topics. Um, let's see, we had Detroit government has a claim, has claim forms ready. I think a lot of this was probably brought up by Bradley Mero. Um, FEMA has claim forms ready. And I had thought she'd put links and stuff like that into the chat, which I did not capture. And so it looks like it's lost. I had asked her to email me all the information and I didn't get it. Um, Detroit government, government, it says here, as staffers arrive at homes to take pictures. Um, and we had that Detroit Water Department has a Facebook page. Homeowners will not receive a ticket for late bulk pickup, and we all know about that. Obviously, a lot of people have had to put a lot of um, items out on their units of their homes to get picked up. Um, Detroit off government's offering volunteer cleanup for people's basements. Um, neighborhood groups are helping too. Some home owners have DT appliance protection coverage. Detroit has five thousand, oh, fifty thousand empty lots. So that's going to come into today's discussion. And I don't know if I digress for a moment, but Karen, was that you brought that information to us?
Yes, can I? Yeah, this is supposed to be a special meeting just for the um, about that is we go in with all this good stuff.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I was just gonna, I'm almost done with the minutes thing. I was just gonna finish going through it. And then we'll go, yeah, onto the, we don't have any other topic. This is just proceed. Um, so yes, maybe, I mean, Karen can tell us more about those empty lots. Um, there's a conflict of interest as it pertains to city government and real estate companies. I assume that's also going to be part of this. And so there's a motion to accept a resolution by Gregory Creswell, seconded by myself. Um, there was a vote to amend the resolution by Gregory Creswell, seconded by Sandra Turner Handy. I believe that was because there was an incorrect date or something like that. And that was regarding the youth representatives. Um, oh, and Karen Knox, while while we have you on here, just a follow up on that thing. Is it okay? Do you want to be a contact on the news release about that, about the youth representative thing?
Youth representative? No, I don't.
Okay, all right.
No, and I didn't, I wasn't the one that brought up that anyway. And I see you have me as saying that I was the one that called motion. No, I did not.
Oh, well, that's a correction.
Right, yeah, yeah, I did not bring that up. My my focus is, as Sandra said, that how they have the lots locked down in in here. And this is where we, I thought we were going to be talking about.
Oh, we will be. That's exactly what's in the meeting. Um, trying to find this, where you say that was in there. Actually, I don't have you. No, I don't. It doesn't say that you, it says motion to accept resolution um, by Gregory Creswell, seconded by Scotty Bowman. Vote to amend resolution by Gregory Creswell, seconded by Sandra Turner Handy. Motion proclaiming land bank must allow residents living north of I ninety four equal rights to purchase as those south of I ninety four. Now Karen, you probably did make that motion, right?
Yeah, yeah, I probably did make a motion about that.
And yeah.
Because what Sandra, what I, my understanding from Sandra is that they are locking us out from getting these lots. And that that's the uh, the issue that we said we wanted to talk about in terms of why we're unable to get the lots in um, just in in all these areas, all this different district, four or five.
Yeah, this is for over here across ninety four.
Okay, so the last two things on here were agreement to hold a meeting to address side lot issue and planning news conference on January twenty six via Zoom. That's what we're doing right now. And then after that, we scheduled our next regular meeting for August ninth at Skinner Playfield.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so we'll go back to, we're going to be talking about the lots now. Um, let me just switch screens again. Okay, so it takes us to um, and I guess we just said informal discussion on the minutes that leave the formal thing till the next meeting. Um, okay, so here we are, presentation during discussion. Well, that is going to be the issue of the lots. So I don't really have anything because um, I expected Karen and others to send something my way, but Karen, you could just bring this all in right now. I'll let you take the floor really, as far as what you want to say about it, what you want to bring in. And I know um, Sandra had looked some things up and had some information we were discussing before the meeting, so she can have that input. And Karen, you go first.
Well, one thing I have a problem with it, the land bank is giving the houses or stuff to the real estate company and selling them for like twenty thousand. They're not maintaining them. Or they have the price on them for as much as twenty thousand. They're not maintaining the lots. They're not maintaining the property. But anybody that buy a house in the land bank, they're on top of them that they got to take pictures and turn things in right away. But yet things that they have out to sell, they're looking at messes, grass is tall, it's five, it's tall. And they're not doing anything about it. So I have, it's a conflict of interest for the land bank to be selling a property and and making aware, every day people cannot buy it because it's out of their reach. Yet they're not maintaining the property that they they have. But yet people that, the small person that purchased a a house, they're on them constantly turning this, turning that, but when they don't even follow the rules themselves.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I've read a letter that I got back from the land bank about two vacant lots in front of me. And the houses were demolished in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Uh huh. And they're telling me that those lots have hardest hit fund lean on them. Meaning that they use federal dollars to demolish those houses. So if I want to purchase those lots, I have to pay the hardest hit fund for demolition of those houses. And that's crazy because those hardest hit funds came from the federal government for that purpose. So if I paid that, does that money go back to the federal government or is that money going to the city? See, that's the problem for me, because if you got grant dollars from the federal government to demolish those houses, you should not be telling me I need to pay twelve thousand dollars for a vacant lot.
I agree.
Twelve thousand, not twelve hundred?
I do, I read the email to you. I told you what they said. The one lot was twelve and one lot is fifteen.
Unreal.
That is.
And and the lot next to, house was torn down next to me two and a half years ago, and they still holding it up. They haven't put the sidewalk down. And it's haven't been turned over. So I understand what you're talking about. Um, and to me, they're holding it for who they want to hold it for. Because why haven't they been to replace the sidewalk? Why haven't it been turned over in almost three years?
Exactly, exactly. And that's the lot in back of me. It has not been a house in back of me for five years, but that land, although she did finally tell me that it's available, but she has to make an inquiry because it is not on the side lot. If you look up that property address, it is not listed for sale. And there are no properties listed for sale within, really within the may no site, no lots listed for sale, really within the Maple Ridge community. Or anything surrounding that, because they have so much contiguous vacant land. My fear is that they're holding this land, that they have a plan. And that they're going to use that proposal and money to clear those last few standing houses. They're going to clear those last few standing houses. And they're going to take and give this property to developers.
Now.
Without the community.
Senator, can you tell us what the approximate boundaries are of the Maple Ridge community?
Uh, it is Kelly to grass it. Houston, Kelly to grass it.
Uh huh.
Houston Whittier to Seven Mile.
Okay, that's the area I've been visualizing. Um, and I've been actually walking. I've probably knocked on your door. I don't know if you saw a piece of my campaign lid or something on your door at any time.
Well, I'm one block out. I'm one block out. Yeah, I'm I'm on the other side, one block the other side of Houston Whittier.
Okay, yeah, so I may not have been over that area.
Yeah, I'm one block, but it, like I said, the land is locked up in my name.
Still between Kelly and Hayes?
Yes, I'm between Hayes and Queen.
Okay, I was over there. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was over on your block.
Okay, I'm between.
Yeah, that that definitely I can see what you're talking about as far as there is a huge amount of open land in that rectangle. And I can easily see that being some kind of plan for, I don't know if they were thinking about a factory or what they, what someone might be thinking of over there. Um,
Well, I actually think that there, because you know that that land falls within the G seven boundaries. So I'm actually thinking that they're thinking redevelopment. But not redevelopment that includes residents
Uh huh.
of that vacant land.
Exactly.
See, the G seven don't fix up the parks and new street signage and all of the pretty stuff. But the hardcore stuff of of housing, that's going to come from a developer.
Can you explain? I'm not familiar with, because when I hear G seven, I'm thinking of like the G eight, like the global.
Oh, no. G seven is the, is those uh, those that five million dollars, ours is from Fifth Third Bank. I think over in your area, I think Blue Cross Blue Shield has one over there and um, you know, the five million that comes in the neighborhood stabilization dollars. That's what it's called.
Okay, neighborhood. Stabilization through banks.
And and the Maple Ridge community falls squarely within those boundaries.
And so you're thinking that they're going to use that money. Is that the same money that's connected with proposal N?
No, they're gonna use, they're gonna use the neighborhood stabilization dollars to make grasser pretty. And to spruce up the parks, they're going to create some micro business districts. Um, things like that. They're going to use the proposal in money to take down the remaining houses on these blocks where they have one or two vacant houses. They're going to use that money to to do the demolition. And they're going to give this land away. They're going to give all these, this vacant land away. And I have been talking with.
They that you've been trying to buy, yeah.
Yes, and other residents. I have been talking with residents because I'm telling them, if you got a side lot, buy that side lot. If you got a lot within five hundred feet, spend that two fifty and get that lot. Because that's the only way we're going to have a say in any development over here is that we're sitting in the middle of a project. And they have to go through us. That's the only way we're going to be at the before any plans are made. That's why I believe there's already a plan on the table. Because otherwise, they would not have locked down all of this property, including houses.
So, yeah, I'm thinking they're trying to find a way around eminent domain limits. Because I remember back a number of years ago, there was something on the ballot called proposal one that passed. And it was to address eminent domain abuse, or what it would happen is a developer would want some land. The city would take it away using eminent domain and then give it to the developer. Where an eminent domain was supposed to only involve um, general public use. And so the law been changed, so they can't do that.
Exactly, exactly. So now they're doing it under the guise of redevelopment.
Okay, so yeah, I kind of get the picture. What, you know, it would really be helpful, I'm thinking, going into this idea of holding a press conference, is those neighbors you've been in contact with, if you could build a list of neighbors who are willing to be kind of step up and be counted um, that have applied for side lots. Um, those would be good people to have at a news conference, because that would show numbers. And then they could, you know, get up and make a make a statement about what they're trying to do.
Yeah, so let me tell you this. My neighbor across the street has next to two lots that are called, that say they have um, hardest hit fund leans on them. They actually sent her postcard to purchase the lot and four hundred dollars. But that's not what that email said to me. The email to me said that that lot was twelve thousand dollars.
If they got the postcards for hundred dollars, then I believe they should be able to get them for hundred dollars. I mean.
Well, they haven't, she put in for the lot and she hasn't heard anything back from them at all.
Okay, somebody's their slot.
I just got an email on the same lot that said it costs twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, the same lot?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, now that's golden. You see, you gotta, if we could document that and you, we could have, does she have the postcard still or he?
Uh, she probably do. I can ask her, yes.
We need to bring her into that discussion and um, because we, and if we got those images available of your letter and her, I don't know if you can scan them or something.
Oh, yeah, mine's is in the email, so I can forward that anywhere and print it out.
Okay.
But yes, so uh, if they're telling her she can buy the lot for a hundred dollars, but they're telling me the same lot costs twelve thousand dollars. I got a problem. Because somebody.
Well, that's a smoking gun. You've got something physical that you can actually show and say, what's this?
Right, right.
Because that's the problem I'm running into is I'm going on hearsay with myself. I could say, yeah, there's a lot of people out there who can't get their side lots, but what is that based on? It's me going door to door and people mentioning to me, I didn't, I should have had out a notepad and taken down their contact information, all that. I just didn't do that. If I had, then I'd have more than the hearsay myself, but all I got personally is hearsay. Um, and looking at the lay of the land, I mean, that's something, you know, when you look at it and you say, look, there's all this land. How come people can't get a lot and they're surrounded by empty, you know, fields?
Right, I'm surrounded. Like I said, the black, the block in back of me has two houses way at the other corner and everything from Queens down to those two houses are empty. But none of that land is available.
I think an ideal place when we do do the news conference would actually be like right in the middle of that. Because if they bring cameras and you get this visual of all this expanse, you know, and we can't get a sideline. We're surrounded by this expanse. Um, and so some the um, Karen, did you have more to add into this right now?
No, not right now, no.
And Karen, what you're talking about, let me tell you something about that also. One of the community groups over here is trying to purchase a commercial structure right on Whittier. Yeah, the structure is actually on the land grid with a assessed value of zero dollars. They are asking them for fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
This property, the roof is caved in, the whole property, I mean, it is a dangerous, it's actually a dangerous structure and probably should have been torn down. But the community group have some funds and they have community people that have the skills to work on the building.
Uh huh.
And they won uh, fifty thousand dollars from them for the property.
See. And it's buildings on grasses that people in my community want to buy and they're being blocked. You see, that's ridiculous.
Yes, and the whole thing is, it is a, it is the, you know, the commercial structures sit over in planning and development. They don't sit in the land bank. Because the commercial structures are handled by some contractual real estate company that the city uses. And they want fifty thousand dollars for this property that they have not maintained. And this is uh, it's owned by the city, but has not been maintained at all by the city. To support what you're saying, Karen, they don't care of it. But then they want to charge the residents and community groups like fifty thou, who has fifty thousand dollars that could go in there helping to renovate the building? You know, but you want us to pay you fifty thousand for a building you have never taken care of.
Exactly, exactly. Now, just like I called the land bank about this four family flat and a complaint. Just like I called the land bank about this four family flat and I complained it. And then I called, then I called the real estate, the real estate company went and told me the, the land bank own it, but they're not maintaining it. And they got a, a twenty or thirty thousand dollar price tag on it. But they on our backs to do everything for, so that it's not right, is, is, it, it, what they're doing is, is illegal to me.
Now, um, Sandra, you mentioned when you're talking about the fifty thousand dollar item. First of all, um, what, you also mentioned zero dollars at some point, was there someplace where it was listed for zero?
Called the Land Grid Detroit.
Land Grid.
And it will bring up any property in the city that you wanna take a look at. And when you look at the set value of the property, it is zero dollars. It has a set value of zero.
That's a big um difference. Can you tell me the name of the community group was trying to buy it?
Gray Communities Now.
Gray, G R A Y?
Yes, Gray Communities Now. Along with um, the mega Everest Church. On, on Whittier and the. Yeah, and the property address is one, 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 eight, four ones and an eight.
Okay, quadruple one, eight, and is that, is it grass shit?
It's Whittier.
Oh, Whittier, okay. And Karen, you mentioned something about a four unit apartment building for twenty grand?
I think it's twenty, the grant they're asking for, it's right here on Glenfield. The, the windows are out, windows are knocked out, they have a wooden wood, um, where they boarded up. Cause I was complaining because it was wide open, they had painted the address on it, the grass is sky high. And so they're making it out of reach of the residents in the neighborhood that would like to purchase this, but they're not maintaining the property at all. And here we are, we working on the property and they're on us, you gotta report, you gotta report, you gotta see, we gotta see what you're doing. But yet, this, you have all the property and you're not reporting anybody and you're not seeing what we know, we, we seen, I'm calling because it's. Please come cut the grass, you can't even do that.
Let me tell you, Karen, one of our, the Capri Store Detroit has two houses, one on Seymour. And one on Spring Garden, and they purchased them from the land bank, but then COVID hit. Which that you can't go out and work on a property, because we have a mandatory stay at home. Them a letter threatening them to take the property back. Because they had not done work on it during COVID nineteen.
Well, I can say this, I, I have a similar situation with zoning. Um, I applied the zoning pass, um, and they approved it before I could go pick up the papers, it's cut, the city was shut now. When they opened back up, they said we only open a certain, certain office, so when I finally got. So you gotta redo this over again, I'm like, wait, this was five thousand dollars. And so your fighting is not, they know everything was shut down. What opened, and this is something to bring to the, it needs to be told, it needs, everything we told was going on in this city.
Okay, I need to make sure I got this all, um, is that Karen just now speaking about the five thousand dollars? Okay, so you paid for it and they told you it's not yours?
No, okay, zoning, we were approved to make this um, um, a zoning for um, 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 community center. But before, they sent the notice that you had to wait thirty days after the approval to pick up the papers. Before I could pick up the paper, COVID hit, everything was shut down, when they came back, they said only certain offices were open. So Pauline Woodseed was closed. By the time I finally got through to somebody, the papers had expired. So I've been fighting ever since, because I feel like I shouldn't have to pay, go back and pay our architect again. And the zoning commission again, to me, that's, everybody's getting paid off, 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 off COVID, and that's not right. Anything that, anytime COVID shut down everything, we should not be held um, to um, of any kind of standards that. Oh, you, oh, oh, your papers expired, but you know that the city county bill was not open. And when they open, you know that people are working from home and not really, you know, we don't have checks and balances in this, in this city. You see what I'm saying?
Story of your own for that press conference, because now, now we're looking, and I've seen this before where. Um, the city doesn't do its job, it uses COVID as an excuse. Penalizes them because they weren't able to do what they would have needed to do to not be penalized.
Exactly.
Do their job, both the community have to do their job.
Who was kept off the ballot using that argument, where, because you have to get your residency confirmed by a certain date before filing. And she wasn't able to do it because the offices were closed because of COVID. And so, but they're not making an exception, even though it wasn't her idea to close the office.
You see, that's what I'm saying, the thing is, the, um, the, I would have to pay the, the architect more money, do you see how this is going? Everybody's paws about to get greased again. Because, you know, well, you gotta pay him for, um, I think it was three or four thousand dollars more, then you gotta pay us another thousand more. And then you gotta come back before the board again, wait a minute, this should not be happening. You knew this, knew that the, the city was shut down, you know that only certain department was open, you know that people were working from home. You know all these things, and yet, you gonna force my hand and say, I gotta have to pay this. No, that's not, that's not right, but see, this is what they're doing, because they can get money out of people and squeeze people, no, you, you know, you can't open up their center. You can't do this because you didn't, and this lady named, um, she bluntly, oh, no, you, I'm not gonna wave the, um, um, late fee. You gotta reapply all over again, so the architect said, well, you gotta reapply, you gotta pay me another three or four thousand dollars, see, this, this doesn't make sense to me.
Now, and wait, so what was the, the information you gave the city that they say is expired, what kind of information is in there?
Um, he wrote the, the plans up.
Like the performer or something like that.
You know, he wrote the design of the house of, of what, how the house is supposed to be. You have to have those designs before you go before the zoning board, okay, so if I go back.
What would be different? Different about those plans now as opposed to then?
Nothing, that's the point, nothing. But they, they said, well, he said, oh, you gotta pay me, because he's in there with you, yes.
Simply redate the same document then.
Okay.
Wouldn't it just require just changing the date?
That's what I would think, but see, everybody's got their hands out, the, it shouldn't, it's, it's, to me, it shouldn't even be a matter of. I'm going for the rezoning, but you approved this zoning.
It was approved, yeah.
Approved loan, um. Yeah, this definitely, and have you already tried talking to any investigative reporters about this already?
No, I have not, actually, M C R lawyer has been talking to them for some months, and then she said she couldn't do nothing, was handing it over to another lawyer. That's how bad it's gotten. We, we, it is that, um, um, the, the, they, their lawyer is talking to M C R lawyer. And they standing like, we're not gonna do nothing, she needs to do this all over again. And yeah, because that's what I was going to say, I was gonna talk to her, I said, the next thing is how, go before the press and let, let the world know what this city is doing. Yeah, 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 and we talked to the mayor, uh, someone in the mayor office, um, you know, different people have been trying to. Get um, um, to them and, and it's the zoning is, um, 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 no, no, we're not gonna, she gotta do this over again. And I'm like, what is this all about, it's like they taking it personal.
Yeah, I heard that over. I heard that same thing over in the Virginia Park.
Yeah, they're trying to wear you down.
Yeah, they just keep doing all that, and then you just give up.
Hey, that's what they want you to do is to give up, they want you to get tired and stop.
Right.
No, I'm, I'm a fighter, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna get tired, you know, because my thing is this. We are trying to, we trying to, we took a house that was on a demolition list, and we turned this house into a learning center to help the community. And you have the audacity to, to, we save you money, at least fifteen thousand dollars from, from tearing that house down. We're fixing this house up, and you on our backs, um, with the, uh, land bank, do this, turn in this, turn in that, move somebody in, turn in this. Then they ain't ready to be moved in, because it costs over a hundred thousand dollars to rehab this house, and yet, then you had the nerve to ask me for another five thousand dollars? When you know that e- everything was shut down?
Yeah, they want you to get tired and stop.
Yeah, you definitely need to, um, have a conference here. Were there any other particular, um, examples then of this type of abuse that, um, we need to bring up then? At this time?
Well, I gave you the example of the property in back of me that's been gone over five years, there's nowhere for sale, any of those lots in back of me. I got one, but I got it two years ago, um, and then the two in front of me where the. My neighbor across the street next door to it, they sent her a side lot thing, and she called, but she hasn't heard anything back. I'm looking for the property, and they told me that it had a hard to set fund lien on it. So it would cost me twelve thou, one was twelve thousand and one was fifteen thousand. And that was the federal government that, that took that house down, not from the city. And the city should not be recouping funds on these vacant lots at the cost of fifteen thousand dollars, that's crazy.
And the lot next to me, I've been trying to get since the house been torn down, the sidewalk has not been, uh, put in. And so, here's something, you can go against me, but you can't make this man put a sidewalk in and I can't buy the lot. I have people in this neighborhood trying to buy buildings on grass, and they're being stopped, they can't find information out about the building. This is an ongoing thing that's going on in Detroit, and I can get people that will stand and, and talk about what is going on. And they try to find out about a building, when they try to get a building, now, here it is, you making me accountable, well, where's the contract that's supposed to put the sidewalk back? Where's that, why are you holding him accountable, why has this land next door to me been released so I can buy it? It has been almost three years since the house been torn down, why is it that people go up on grass and it's, building's been boarded up for, I know, twenty years? And they can't get the property.
Well, I'mma tell you what I've been told by some of the people over in Virginia Park area, where they facing the same thing. One person sent letters to everybody, the attorney general, she sent a letter to everybody she could think of in government. Listen, the city came back and told her, if we know that you were gonna be contacting everybody on this. You gonna have people looking at us, we should have just gave you the lots you wanted.
Oh, really?
The end of giving it to her?
She told them no, because what about the people that didn't write a letter that's trying to get a lot? She told them no, she said, I've been trying to get these lots, and y'all know it, I've been taking care of them. And other people been trying, they, they have to go through the developer and buy, purchase those lots at his cost. But they're gonna pull the ones out of his inventory and give her what she asked for, because they need her to be quiet.
What is the name of this developer?
I can't think of his name, but I'll get it, I'll get his name. Yeah, he the one trying to change the whole name of the community.
Oh, is that in the Herman Kiefer area around here? It's that one, okay.
Hold on one minute, guys, I gotta get the dog.
Sure, yeah, hear the dog.
Well, if, if, if that's the case, let me start writing to a lot of my public officials a- about what's going on here. And get on the media, because, um, um, it, it's, it's ridiculous that I have to go through this. It's really ridiculous that I'm fighting for, um, now this, now here, we're, here, this year is almost gone. And I've been fighting since last year about this zoning. So to me, it, it, it is, they determined, they say to make me pay this money again, but so whoever can get more money, that, that's how I see it.
Yeah, that's exactly what it sounds like to me, it sounds like they're trying to, either that or worse, yet they're just trying to make it impossible for you to do it at all. And you already paid them, so you're already out the five thousand, right?
Right.
So it seems like if you withdrew from the thing, then you'd have a grounds for refund at least.
Oh, you know, they're not gonna give you a refund.
For it for, if you weren't getting what you paid for.
You pay, I pay for zoning, and they had, they have on the papers that they have a certain time to be filed or they will expire, they tell you that, okay? But COVID hit, and they knew that, and they knew that while COVID was hit, that those day, that, that, I think it was sixty days. Had passed, the, the papers was already expired, when they decided.
They wouldn't let you file them even during COVID?
You couldn't file nothing, said the county bill was shut down, everything was.
See, so, you know, that's entrapment, they say you have this deadline, and then they make it impossible to meet the deadline, that's like they're setting you up, that's a scam.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that they, when COVID hit, everything closed down, you couldn't go through the city county bill, you did nothing. When they opened, I think it was August of last year, only certain offices was open, the whole building wasn't open, it wasn't open to the public either. You see, and so they had said that on news, they never said that people were working from home, they never said you can file it online, they never said any of those things. See, but then they come back later, oh, well, you know, we were working from home, well, how was, am I a genie? How was I supposed to know you working from home?
That wasn't, um, that, they, they, it says you already had a document filed, they should have sent you a letter notifying you how to go about it.
Yeah, I was supposed to come pick up certain papers and file them, but the building, with everything was shut down. And let you know how or disorganized they was, one day when I finally got through somebody, because I first time I called a guy, said, you know, B C is closed. But you keep trying, I kept trying, when I finally got through somebody, which I think was in December or January, they told me, when you go down Friday and, and, and pick up paper. I went down there, fired, the, the building was cold, they said, man, that floor is closed, so this is how disorganized they was, that even people that were answering the phone. Didn't know what was going, what's going on.
No, um, Ms. Knox, I'm just gonna ask, did you, um, manage, and I, I'm not doing this to be nitpicking myself, I'm just. It seems to me we need to come at this with as much as we can dig up, do you have any documentation? Um, I, I, I believe you a hundred percent are telling the truth, but I'm just saying, do you have documentation that you? Tried, I mean, for instance, you got your phone records of trying to call them, do you have, um, witnesses or pictures of you going and trying to get the paper?
Well, I do have the guy that went down there with me, but this was after, this was in December, I believe, that went down there with me. I did reach out to the guy at first, that, um, the architect, and he told me, he said that, uh, I had to, I forget the lady name. Contact her. And when I, oh, and, um, so, um, he said I had to contact her, and, um, then, um. Um, she had, she was out of town, because we sent the email, this is by this time, it was beginning of this year. And she was, she was out of town, and so when I was sitting down there with the guy, he said, oh, no, you can't do this, no, this is expired, and the thing is. At the end of the day, the papers were expired during COVID. So, um, they know what they did, and unfortunately, I was trying to get rid of a lot of emails, I deleted a lot of stuff. Not knowing this is gonna be a problem later on, but they know that those papers expired during the COVID. They know that the offices was closed, because the government shut everything down. They know that the offices was closed, cause the government shut everything down. There was no announcements at all. There was no letter in the mail. There was nothing that said, oh, um, we're working from home. If you need to file something, if you need to pick up something, how could you pick up something if you're working from the home?
Well, and the thing is, if you showed up, if you went by that office and there wasn't anything on the door that said, this is what you need to do since the office is closed. Or if you called them and there was not a message saying, this is what you need to do. Or it didn't get forwarded to somebody, then that's on them. You obviously made every effort to get things. And the obvious places to inform people of their alternatives is on the, um, the, you know, the outside of their office on the door. And in a phone message, if you try to call them.
Now, you gotta remember, you couldn't even get into the city county building, cause it was closed. So, and when you went down to on the roadblock, on the roadblock, it said, call this number to get an appointment. Well, good luck with that. Call and call and call. You couldn't get through to that. Everything was set where you couldn't get through because people weren't doing their jobs. And, and, um, so I'm quite sure it was a lot of backup work or whatever. But the bottom line is this, they never made any kind of announcement. They never sent out any kind of letters. Nothing saying, well, if you have this problem or something, you can go this way or you could do that. It would just announce everything is closed. That was what was told. Then it was some, and then they said some offices are open, but all the departments were not open. Okay, they know this. But you know what? I'mma do what you said. I'm starting writing. I know what to do. I know who to start writing.
Yeah, so I would say we need to have everybody organize whatever they got. And it sounds like you have quite a bit. Um, and then as far as actually doing a news conference. When would, and I'm, I'm mainly gonna direct this to Sandra and Karen, since it seems like you have the most information to go with. When would you say would be a good time to actually have that, you know, date and time wise? To actually have the news conference and make it, um, something that, you know, you would have the most people lined up to back you up on, the most papers that you could whip out and hand to a reporter or we could email out. And that kind of thing, when would be the best time window in which you think that would work?
Well, right now, from one to, one to six, um, with the summer youth cap. So anytime early in the day is fine with me. Um. Anytime early in the day is fine with me.
Okay, and I'm, I'm thinking about dates also.
About what dates?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, um, hmm. I, I would, I'd like to, would like to do it as soon as possible. Um, so Sajid, what, what do you say?
Here I come, hold on. Yeah, I was moving stuff into the house. Okay, uh, so what day did y'all come up with?
We haven't yet.
Okay. So what are y'all thinking?
Well, I said earlier in the day, as opposed to late in the day would work for me.
Yeah, earlier in the day always works for me.
Yeah, before, before one o'clock. Also, um.
Well, I thought you said one P M. to six P M.
One P M. to six P M. is my summer youth cap. So enrichment program, so it can't be during that time, cannot be during that time. And that's, yeah, cannot be during that time. That's why I said earlier in the day, before one o'clock, works better for me.
Okay, now the other thing that comes up is, um, but as far as, I mean, I wanna make sure we actually have all our ducks in a row here. So we gotta have these people contacted that, um, have been trying to do this, other additional people. Um, the supporting documents and supporting persons. How long, what's the minimum amount of time that would take to get together?
Well, I have, I have the papers that I originally had from, that shows when, when I did the filing. I have the papers showing when I was supposed to, um, where it states, when I was supposed to pick up papers. And we know when the COVID hit, because I was thinking also today. One thing we can get with the news media can tell us when that announcement was made, when the city opened up. And it also will have in records, when, um, not only when it opened up, what they say, said in terms that only certain office was open. That's, um, the news will still have that coverage. And I think we could get that. Um. Those, those are the papers I have, because when we went to the closing of the house, which was in November. That, um, I was able to go into the ladies office, but I was the only person able to go in. And by, and, and like I said, I was reaching out, asking people. And unfortunately, I don't have the names of the people I talked to at that time, um, back in, um, in, um, August. Who I called in terms of, um, um, who to talk at B C. All I know is they told me that office remain closed. And I did not know who to talk to. I do know the person that, the architect that's asking for more money. I reached out to him. Now, whether or not he'll step up and say it, I don't know. But he also, Janice, that's her name, um, he reached out to her. And so he's the only person I know that actually know that was reaching out, trying to get help. And like I said, whether or not he would say it, I don't know, because see, his hands get greased if, um, I have to go be helped. Um, what is on me, boy, he gets it thousands. So, um, therefore, I, I don't know how, you know, which way he would lean. But I just felt like even that, he shouldn't have been charging me again. But he, you know, well, I had to charge you same fee again. I'm thinking, wow, you didn't rewrite, draw any pictures or anything, why? Why would you charge me again? You know, that didn't make sense to me. And it seemed like they all working together. And mind you, this person I met in the city county building, because somebody at the city county building referred them to me. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I just, I really think the fact that I have papers showing the day that when, when we supposed to pick them up. And that it shows when the government put it in, that's evidence enough right there. Because you know, if, if it was in March, April, May, June, July, August, that was five months. It was nine, I think it was sixty or ninety days, past the time, it was already expired. And to say, to say, oh, well, you should have asked right away and, and, and all this kind of stuff, it's, it's malarkey. Anything that happened during COVID that expired should automatically say, well, um, we going to overlook that and extend it. That should automatically be done. Not what you think, um, come in or, you know, you should have did this or you should have known this and, uh-uh. And I shouldn't have to be sitting here fighting, um, 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 with lawyers about this. It, it doesn't make sense. But now, uh, but I, I, I'll reach out to, to higher officials. Yeah, I had people call me and say, well, you know, cause this is how much the, the, um, mayor's office. Well, I'm talking to them and they're saying that, um, you didn't email them and you didn't reach out to them. And, um, you didn't, how would I know who to call, uh, reach out to, other than what was on that paper?
Right.
So it's, it's just a game being played to get more money. And who to say the money is not going in those people's pockets?
Yeah, exactly. When the city shut down, it shut down. So how are you gonna know who to contact?
Exactly. And, and why didn't the city do their due diligence of sending letters out to people? Or if they was working from home, why didn't they call people and say, we see here that you have papers that need to be filed. This is what you do, or send a letter out. They could make one mass letter and say, dear so-and-so, or just dear, you know, and send that out to everybody saying, this is what's going on. We need you to file this way or try this way. We're working from home. They didn't do any of that. They did not. And so they were us to pay for what they did not do?
Exactly.
No.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here thinking, we got, um, in the two weeks since the last meeting, I hadn't really heard anything until the meeting we're having right now. So it obviously is gonna take a little bit of time to get all this together. Um, and then we got a meeting in two weeks from today anyway. That, and that's the meeting we have, um, over at Skinner Park by Denby. And I'm gonna make a quick call and I'm gonna mute my phone while I'm calling. Um, cause I'm gonna check on something regarding my calendar, cause I'm trying to make it, I want us all to be able to be there. Um, and it's unfortunate, we don't have all the members on this right now.
Big giant spider.
Okay. So I'm gonna make this call really brief. I'm just gonna mute myself right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, by the way, you didn't have to stop talking all because I was muting myself. But, um, I'm looking at my calendar here, because then I think the, probably the best bet could be. And, you know, and we give a chance to rain people in the, is there a preferred day of the week for anyone on here?
Thursday mornings are good for me. Wednesday mornings are good for me.
Okay, um, is one other thing I gotta check real quick. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking tentatively, um, the eighteenth or nineteenth. And that would give us plenty of time to get organized.
Um. No, I just scheduled some for the eighteenth. Give me one second. I know I did, I know I did. Let me check my calendar. Hold on. I just put something on there for the eighteenth.
And I'm gonna pause, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just mute myself for a minute and walk away and come back while you're doing that. And I just have to look at one other calendar.
Okay.
How did that come up? Here we go. Oh, no, there we go. Okay. Oh. Oh, well. Thought I was muted. Oh, boy.
Yeah, I just put something on my calendar for the eighteenth at twelve. If it's before then, I'm good. Y'all see, it's getting dark in my room.
Yeah, same here. Now I'm trying to find my phone.
How about, um, August nineteenth at, and one, oh, news conferences, you wanna do it when they typically, and isn't there usually like a noon broadcast on some of the stations?
Eleven o'clock. Yeah.
Are you saying eleven o'clock broadcast?
Yeah.
So maybe we should organize it for like ten forty-five and that way people have a little bit of time to get there ahead.
Okay, the nineteenth, you said?
Yeah, and then the cameras could be ready at eleven if, um, they decide they wanna pick it up.
Okay. Nineteenth. All right.
And, and my only thing I'm wondering about is if some of the other people being involved, if we'd have any trouble getting, um, them there if they have a work, you know, hour conflict or not.
And where are we talking about holding to that?
Well, I, my thoughts were, and you can, if you disagree, please speak up. But what I was thinking is it would be good to have it someplace that's actually where those lots are. Or, you know, somewhere that visually tells the story that we're telling. Whether it be in front of some of the dilapidated structures that won't be torn down. Um, I think that'd be great if we could have like, you know, be standing at a location where some of the lots in question are. And where there's a whole bunch of empty land behind us, you know, so you got that view where we're standing there and there's all this empty land and no one can get it.
Mm-hmm.
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 So in other words, you know.
I like to do it in front of the, the two lots that they talking about got hardest hit leans on them. Cause I wanna know why these leans are on this property if the federal government has already paid for these houses to be demolished. Why are you charging residents?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so August nineteenth and it could have it at, um, maybe ten forty-five A M.
Uh, okay.
With that as the time and that way, um, we'd be ahead of the, um, any, cause a lot of times they like to come on the air with something that's going on current. And that way we'd be timing ourselves well for that kind of thing. Um. Yeah, so we could have that, um, and tentatively, um, and where would that, where is that at? On Glenfield or something?
No, that one is on Flanders.
Oh, Flanders, okay.
Oh, wow.
Flanders, what cross street would that be near?
Between, uh, Haynes and Queens.
Okay, okay, I know exactly where that is.
And those are the two lots that they're saying that were demolished in eighteen and nineteen that they are saying, got these leans on them. So if I want the lots, I gotta pay off the leans. But my neighbor got a card saying that the side lot is available next to her house, which is the same lot.
Oh, we gotta get a copy of that card too. That's golden.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Here, hold on a minute. I got some, hello? Hello? Yes, it is. May I ask who's calling? Oh, good. You know, we're right in the middle of a meeting, but it's actually perfect that you're calling during a meeting, cause this does relate to the Community Advisory Council. So I could mute myself, but the, actually, well, here, I guess I will mute myself just for minutes, cause otherwise they're hearing half a conversation. Hold on, I got, I got the, um, mother of one of the youth representatives.
Yeah, so that'll be good, but I gotta get off the phone, guys.
Let me ask you something, Sajid, before either y'all leave, y'all know anybody that knows how to hang doors, exterior doors?
You know what, uh, Karen, do you ever take advantage of Camp Restore Detroit?
No, I don't. Tell me about it. Where can I call?
Camp Restore Detroit, uh, do you know George Preston, you know, Mohican region?
No.
Okay, I'mma send you, I'mma do an email between you and George.
Okay, great.
George is over scheduling the Camp Restore volunteers.
Okay, okay.
And they will come out and hang them doors for you as a volunteer effort. They do any work we need done, any cleanups, any of that kind of stuff over here in the ninth precinct. Uh, and all volunteers come in and do the work.
Do they, do they do drywall?
Uh, that depends. They try to match up what you need with the volunteers they have.
Okay, well, I, I would like to speak with George ASAP. Cause I need to get. I need to get your reports up.
Okay.
And people are not showing up and I'm just going through.
Yeah, and like I said, they do, they do the work. And, uh, all they ask is that you have your materials and they'll do the work.
Oh, awesome.
And it's, it's volunteers and they're doing it for community members over here in the ninth, so.
Okay. Okay.
Them working, they were doing a lot of the clean out of basements over here for a lot of the seniors who didn't, who didn't trust just people coming into their house. So I had, you know, cuz, you know, the city had their program, but shoot, nobody wanna be letting nobody in their house.
Oh, yeah, cuz when they came here, I made sure they had badges and I D.
Wait a minute, but, but see, you, you still, wh- where you can make a fuss, I'm talking about old people that's living by their, you know, that.
Right, I understand.
So I took the volunteers cuz they know me. You know what I'm saying? They wasn't gonna let somebody come in their house just cuz they had a badge.
Right. They should.
Right. We don't stay there with all kind of stuff going on, D T.
Right, you're right about that, right.
You know? And that's what I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I, that, what I did is I found out that apparently one of our youth representatives, um, so much time had gone by that he joined another organization and didn't have time for this anymore. But, um, I think it still makes the point that the council person should have done what he was supposed to do when he was supposed to do it. Um, okay, so I'm sorry, I missed, was there anything, um, that I need to hear that I missed when I was on that call just now?
No. Hmm, uh-uh.
And Karen, do, Karen, I got your email, right?
Yes, you do.
Okay, okay, I'll get it out to you. I'll, I'll do an email introduction for you.
Awesome, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, good then. I guess we got what we got, um, accomplished.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can bring up, we can, we can update the rest of the C A C and the community members at our next meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty. All right, um, good talking to you guys. I had a long day, so I really don't wanna be on this phone forever.
All right, thanks.
I, I, I've been traveling all day and I just got back in the house, so I'm really, I'm exhausted. Okay, guys.
I totally understand.
Good to see everyone.
Good to see you, okay. I'll look for that email for me, Sandra.
Okay, sound good.
Okay. All right, thanks, bud.
Okay.
Good night. Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.
Scotty, I'm taking an enjoyment.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, take care of Scotty.
Okay, take care.
Good night, Scotty.
Good night, Zelda. Good night, Donna.
Night.
Night.